Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, September 7, 2021. Having a meeting announcement, council will continue meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue joining virtually as there will be limited seats, numbers of seats available in council chambers. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here, sorry about that. I'm actually here.
Here too.
Thank you.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Tonchoukoun, Tonchoukoun this weekend, and our condolences, he was a District Two resident, but his family gave so much to the entire city of Pittsburgh. So please keep him in your thoughts as we can have a moment of silence. Also, the mother of Willie McCain, who works for the county exec also passed away. So keep them in our thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to also mention that today is Rosh Hashanah. So for those who celebrate, we'd like to help wish you a very healthy and wonderful New Year. And now with our first order of business is proclamations, and I have one to be presented. Do you want to join me, please?
You can come up here. I'm gonna do it up here, please. Want to come up here?
So I just want to mention that Our Lady of Victory Church moved into the city of Pittsburgh. They purchased the old St. Pancras Church in Beachview. Formerly, they were located in the city of Pittsburgh in Brookline. They moved to Scott Township for several years, and we're happy to have them back in the city of Pittsburgh. And with the new pastor, Father Samir, I just want to thank you for being here, you and your family for being here. But I want to say that with your outreach, I have great hopes for this church. You not only reach out to the Lebanese community, you're welcoming the parishioners from the former St. Pancras, and you're welcoming the Latino community and everyone. So thank you for being so welcoming and so open to all. And I'm going to acknowledge my brother, Core Bishop Michael Cale and Richard Gill. Whereas Our Lady of Victory Maranay Catholic Church will be celebrating Lebanese-American heritage at their new home at 1,000 Tropical Avenue with its annual festival to be held from Friday, September 10 through Sunday, September 12, 2021. And whereas the festival showcases authentic Lebanese cuisine such as grape leaves kibbi and Lebanese chicken, as well as their history, our history and culture for the Pittsburgh community to enjoy. And whereas music will be played throughout the festival, so you can enjoy the best atmosphere, and it will include a Lebanese singer, a band and band on Friday, Saturday at 6:00 PM, Friday and Saturday at 6:00 PM. And whereas the Pittsburgh Lebanese Festival is the largest fundraiser of the church, which conducts its services in English, Arabic and Aramaic. Did I say that right? And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby thank Our Lady of Victory Maranay Catholic Church for their allegiance to family, faith and food, and be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, September 10 through Sunday, September 12, 2021 to be Lebanese-American Days in the city of Pittsburgh. Do you have a motion to approve?
Remove.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Disposed, proclamations approved. Thank you, everyone, and I'll give this to Father. And do you want to say a few words?
Oh, Core Bishop.
Please. If we'll say something first, then.
Are you paid for this?
There's not much to say except thank you, and it's nice to be back in our home. Our original parish was established not 14 blocks from here, on Fullerton Street near St. Benedict Moore. It's great to be back, and we're very appreciative of this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you are doing for us, and we love you all, and everybody is invited to join us also. You are always welcome. Thank you.
And I have one to be, proclamations to be read into the record.
Madam Clerk. Council President Smith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Pittsburgh Musical Theater on their 30th anniversary, and be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 9 through the 12 to be Pittsburgh Musical Theater Days in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Disposed, proclamations approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official actions or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And I have the registered speaker as Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Good morning. Dr. Ronald Miller, PhD, Bell's Hoover and Lawrenceville Global Intelligence Society, candidate for mayor 2021, optimize information and intelligence. The core issue for all macro scale U.S. governance and for this local micro scale fractal of U.S. Republican representative democracy, the city of Pittsburgh, is vote voter verification, establishing an evidentiary link fusing a vote to a unique voter, some high non-zero value information about the vote in the USA. No voter in any PA county can verify his or her vote because the PA voter recording systems, VRS, do not give the voter a paper copy of his or her vote via the ES and S Express Vote Paper Ballot in Allegheny County, or an encrypted electronic generated paper receipt via the DS 200 precinct scanner in Allegheny County, showing not only that she he voted, but also for whom. We can't check. The probability that the PA Sure system, statewide uniform registry of electors, ensures election results reliably at greater than 99% is .00001. What are you going to do about it? You councilors cannot prove that anyone using the PA VRS in this county voted for you, ever. Voter proof for Ghanai, zero. For Pidu, zero. You are all illegitimate. All votes in Allegheny County, in all other 66 PA counties, in all counties of the USA using the same or similar systems are illegitimate. The overall U.S.-American system is built on quicksand. The overall U.S.-American voting system itself, in my view and the view of the GIS, is a fraud. This is low value, near zero, intelligence. I had advanced vote voter verification via paper copy and receipt since 2013, long before the 2018 line was drawn by the state of Pennsylvania. And in 2016, I presented citizen briefs on VVV to the U.S. Supreme Court and the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, the only individual that we are aware of in the United States to do so. What have you, as councilors, done, or Pidu, or Ghanai, done? As far as I know, nothing. What are you going to do? I think you should look at In Ray Scroggins, Pennsylvania Supreme Court, 2020.
Have a good day. Next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Will join us on Zoom.
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi.
Hi, Teresa. Shady trees, not shady deals. Why do we pay taxes for detrimental school board governance? Why does city school tax get wasted on things like CRT that is designed to divide people and make white children feel bad about themselves? Why do so many politicians give lip service to helping the environment but don't speak up for beneficial green space to replace problem buildings? Why is it okay for school districts to close an excellent school, let it sit empty for more than a decade, then go against the actual residents that own property and live there by making an agreement to sell to a developer who intends to install high density commercial property there? Why do unethical superintendents get to remain in place after a slap on the wrist? How can it be legal, moral, or ethical for a school board to sell a building to a developer who intends to use it for unapproved zoning use? Why doesn't the Pittsburgh City Council create a resolution to block rezoning of Bonner School? Why doesn't City Council make a resolution to support a green space to replace Bonner School as soon as possible? Shady trees, not shady deals. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone else before City Council? In the audience? Anyone else before City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which will be the presentation of papers. And we will begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
New papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Okay. Madam Clerk, can you grab? Thank you. Papers for Councilman Coghill.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1824, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the West Penn Allegheny Hills System, granting right of entry for foot traffic of staff and students onto licensed premises to PPS during designated times and dates. Bill Number 1825, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for Electronic Access to Pennsylvania Crash Information Tool at No Cost to the City. Bill Number 1826, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic Article One, Administration by Establishing Traffic Regulations for Electric Low Speed Scooters, Consistent with PA Act 24 of 2021 and Article 16Q Passed by the Pennsylvania General Assembly on June 25 of 2021. Bill Number 1827, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into a No Cost Agreement with Skinny Labs INC. to Advance an Electric Low Speed Scooter Pilot in Conjunction with a Mobility Demonstration Project. Bill Number 1828, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 466, Entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement for the professional landscape architectural services for Homewood Park infrastructure upgrades between the city and Studio Zuite. In the amount of $1,853,355.90, by increasing the total allocation by $168,486.90.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Inner Governmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1829, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Charles and Deidra Edman in the Amount of $4,134.21 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Park Vehicle from a Failed Tree Branch on the City Parcel on August 17 of 2019. Bill Number 1830, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Di Apollonia Engineering Division of Ground Technology in the Amount of $7,039.68 for Expert Services relating to a Case File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1831, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into an Agreement with Frost Todd Brown LLC for Legal Assistance related to Real Estate, Public Finance, and Municipal Law. In addition, said firm will be available on an as-needed basis to provide consulting services, the total cost for this project shall not exceed $150,000 over a three-year period. Bill Number 1832, Resolution Amending Resolution 261, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Finance to enter into an Agreement with Corn Fairy Hay Group, Inc., to provide curatorial services for the city to include the required quadrennial experience study and an additional cost not to exceed $45,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Corey O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman Wilson, for Councilman O'Connor.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1833, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with LeDius Security Detection and Automation, Inc., for equipment maintenance services to the city's X-ray security systems, at an overall cost not to exceed $52,000. Bill Number 1834, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 608, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with the centers that cares for the purpose of continued implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention Street Outreach Program at an overall cost not to exceed $9,014,170. Bill Number 1835, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Operation Better Block for the purpose of implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention Street Outreach Program at an overall cost not to exceed $233,333. Said agreement shall continue the scope of services as provided in a prior agreement that was funded by a grant from the Hillman Family Foundations as authorized by Resolution Number 269. Bill Number 1836, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreements with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency to Receive Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Justice's Emergency Federal Law Enforcement Assistant Grant Program to Mitigate Costs incurred in Summer and Fall 2020 by the city's law enforcement response while under a disaster emergency declaration.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1336, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article One Section 90203, zoning map by changing from RMM, Multi-Unit Residential Moderate Density; R1DL, Single-Unit Detached Residential Low Density; and RIDVL, Single-Unit Detached Residential Very Low Density; R2M, Two-Unit Residential Moderate Density; and RP, Residential Plan Unit Development; 2EMI, Educational Medical Institution, 27 Parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 7th and 14th Ward. Bill Number 1337, Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan, under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article Two, Chapter 905, and Article Seven, Chapter 922, for Chatham University Institutional Master Plan dated March 2021 on Property to Be Zone, EMI Educational Medical Institution District 17 and 14th Ward, Council District Number Eight.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, you have a motion to waive the rules of council for bills 1336 and 1337?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of councils that bills 1336 and 1337 appear tomorrow's standing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The bills will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And we have Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. That's okay.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1837, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Budget and the 2018 CDBG Program, the 2018 Through 2023 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reduce Cameron Welch Youth Baseball by $12,030 and increase Northside Youth Athletic Association by $12,030, and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Thank you. And myself, I have no papers, so we'll move on to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman, we'll begin with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1816, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for September 1, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1759, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of DuKane Light Company in the Amount of $2,697.28 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Wooden Light Pole Near 921 Blackadore Street by a City Environmental Services Vehicle on September 30 of 2019. Bill Number 1760, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving 2019 Capital Budget, 2019 CDBG Program, the 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Play Area Improvements by $306,100 and Increase in Street Resurfacing by $306,100. Bill Number 1761, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program and the 2020 Through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, Public Safety Facilities by $1,526,404.78 and Increasing Street Resurfacing by $1,526,404.78. Bill Number 1762, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program, and the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Carrolli Recreation Center Demolition and Reconstruction by $800,000. Facility Improvements, Public Safety Facilities by $1,000,000. Facilities Improvement, Recreation and Senior Centers by $1,83,238 and Increasing Street Bill Number 1763, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 Through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by Transferring an Additional $250 to the Huel Community Development Corporation for a Total of $1,500 within Council District Six Neighborhood Needs. Bill Number 1764, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 275, Providing for an Agreement and/or Contract for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for a City Council Neighborhood Needs Program, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Not to Exceed, Therefore Transferring an Additional $250 to the Huel Community Development Corporation in Council District Six Neighborhood Needs. Total Cost for All Projects is Not to Exceed $130,802.79.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross.
Excuse me, thank you. As I said last week, I don't believe that we should be kind of using ARPA funds to over-budget the Parks and Rec funding on bills with 1760, bills 1761 and bills 1762, and then just kind of moving that money out to use for paving. And so I'm voting no on those bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, but aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Thank you. No on bills 1760, 1761, and 1762. Aye on all other bills.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cale Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes on bills 1759, 1763, and 1764, and one no on bill 1760, 1761, and 1762.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services. Can I have Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor? Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. You have a long stretch.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1817, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for September 1, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1765, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania EMS Provider Foundation to Purchase Emergency Ventilators and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $7,267. Bill Number 1766, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Shallow Creek Kennels in the Amount of $8,500 for the Purchase of One K9 for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Bill Number 1767.
Bill Number 1767, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the City to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice to Receive Monies from the 2018 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and Further Authorizing Legitimate Expenditures by the Bureau of Police for Purchases Authorized by the Grant Agreement and for Execution of Agreement and/or Contracts for Any Equipment or Services Required in Connection with the Execution of Said Grant. Said Agreement shall not exceed $113,702. Bill Number 1768, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the City to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice to Receive Monies from the 2019 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and Further Authorizing Legitimate Expenditures by the Bureau of Police for Purchases Authorized by the Grant and for Execution of Agreement for Any Equipment or Services Required in Connection with the Execution of Said Grant. Said Agreement shall not exceed $52,000. Bill Number 1769, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Cortico and the Young Men and Women's Hebrew Association and Irene Kaufman Centers and Related Subscription Agreement with Cortico for the Creation by Cortico of a Wellness Application to Provide Mental Health and Wellness Services to Employees of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, Bureau of Fire, and the Bureau of EMS and Their Families, and further pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, Accepting a Donation of Funds from the JCC with a Value of $67,500 to Pay for the Initial One-Year Term of Such Agreement for the Wellness App. Bill Number 1770, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the City to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice to Receive Monies from the 2020 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and Further Authorizing Legitimate Expenditures by the Bureau of Police for Purchases Authorized by the Grant for the Execution of Agreement and/or Contracts for Any Equipment or Services Required in Connection with the Execution of Said Grant. Said Agreement shall not exceed $88,000. Bill Number 1771, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police to Enter into a Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice to Receive Monies from the 2021 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and Further Authorizing Legitimate Expenditures by the Bureau of Police for Purchases Authorized by the Grant and/or Contracts for Any Equipment or Services Required in Connection with the Execution of Said Grant. Said Agreement shall not exceed $88,000.
Thank you, and you have heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of their passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That brings us to Councilwoman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works, and can I have Councilman Kraus for Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. I don't want to make you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1818, Report of the Committee on Public Works for September 1st of 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1733, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title Four, Public Places and Properties, Article One, Public Right-of-Way Eleven Parks and Playground and Fourteen Public Buildings, by Adding Language to Require that New Street Lights and Lighting in Newly Constructed and Renovated City-Owned Facilities and Parks Comply with Dark Sky Lighting Principles. Bill Number 1734, Resolution Vacating a Portion of California Avenue from Kirkbride Street to Concho Avenue, a Portion of Cedric Street from Lamont Way to Kirkbride Street, Dahlway from Concho Avenue to California Avenue, and an Unnamed Alley from Dahlway to California Avenue in the 21st Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 1735, Resolution Granting Unto 55935 Baum Boulevard Associates LLC, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense to Install a New Concrete Ramp and Landing with Handrails to Access the Main Entrance at 5935 Baum Boulevard, Eighth Ward, Ninth Council District. Bill Number 1736, Resolution Granting Unto ACR Walnut LP, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense to Install a New Accessible Entry Ramp at 5743 Walnut Street, Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District. Bill Number 1737, Resolution Granting Unto 429 Forbes Associates LLC, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Reconstruct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, an Existing Electrical Vault at 429 Forbes Avenue in the Second Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 1738, Resolution Granting Unto Jason and Laura Rock, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, a New Retaining Wall with Decorative Safety Fence at 714 Amberson Avenue, Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District. Bill Number 1739, Resolution Granting Unto Bakery Square Holdings LP, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, a New Projecting Sign at 6425 Penn Avenue, 12th Ward, Ninth Council District. Bill Number 1740, Resolution Granting Unto Millwood Manor LLC, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense, a New Projecting Light Fixer at 845 Western Avenue in the 22nd Ward, First Council District. Bill Number 1741, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Windsor Avenue-Carnahan Road Intersection Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $3,025,000, an Increase of $251,000 to Increase the Project's Construction Budget. The Original Agreement was Authorized by Resolution 850 of 2017. Bill Number 1743, Resolution Authorizing the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into a Commodities Agreement with Intel Light Products for Purchase of Traffic Control Equipment through December 31st of 2022. Intel Light Products is the Sole Manufacturer of the Traffic Control Technologies that is compatible with the Key Tron System and allows the City to Replace our Older Traffic Control Technology with Up-to-Day Equipment as Older Equipment continues to fail. Bill Number 1745, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the Shade Tree Commission Using Funds from the Shade Tree Trust Fund controlled by the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement with Tree Pittsburgh to Develop, Launch, Promote, and Manage a Significant Tree Registry at a Cost Not to Exceed $50,000 over a Two-Year Period with an Option to Renew. Bill Number 1792, Resolution Granting Unto Garden Theater Park LLC, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Costs and Expense to Install Below-Grade Footing and Beams Under the Sidewalk at 6 West North Avenue in the 22nd Ward, First Council District.
Thank you, you have heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, that brings us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1819, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for September 1st, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1797, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Common Census in the Amount of $20,000 for Continued Usage of Their Benefits Platform.
Thank you, you have heard the reading and the title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, that brings us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1820, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September 1st of 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1776, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into Many Grant Reimbursement Agreements for the 2021 Love Your Block Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $20,000. Bill Number 1777, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Community-Based Organizations for Community and Economic Development for Planning Assistance in Various Neighborhoods in the City and Providing Operating Support for These Group and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $460,000.
Thank you, you have heard the reading and the title of bills, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, you have a?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend 1777.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that there was an email sent out that clearly explains what's happening here, but for the public, this is essentially adding Rising Tide Partners to the allocations.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any extensions? The bill's amended, and now a vote on the final bills. Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Sorry, was there any discussion, I'm sorry, was there any discussion on the bills? amended bill, okay, I'm sorry, not seeing none, Madam Clerk. All in favor of, the bill's now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule, I apologize.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that brings us to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 1821, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for September 1, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1713, Resolution Submitting the Recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to Rename the Ballpark at Fineview Park, the Kenneth Minton Senior Memorial Ball.
Thank you, you have heard the reading and the title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill, Councilman Wilson? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, finally passed, that brings us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1822, Report of the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for September 1st, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1772, Resolution Authorizing the City to Extend a Contract Agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television for Public Access Television Services by Extending the Term of the Agreement until September 30th of 2021. Bill Number 1773, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 376, which Authorize the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Planet Technologies for Essential Support and Maintenance Services for the Continued Operations of Cities SaaS Email and Data File Collaboration. This Agreement is to Rectify the Difference of $15,700 between Amount in Contract and Amount in Legislation Due to the Use of Emergency COVID Legislation in 2020. Bill Number 1774, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Monday.com, an Online Project Management and Portfolio Management Tool for Use with Multiple City Departments at a Cost Not to Exceed $80,000. Bill Number 1775, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Long-Term License Agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for a Unified Fiber Internet Connectivity Network to License Dark Fiber Infrastructure to Connect 131 Sites for a Term of 10 Years at $1,016,028 per Year at a Cost Not to Exceed $10,160,280.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that brings us to our last committee of the day, which is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1823, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for September 1st of 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1747, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Harvard Beatty Housing Project 205 through 233 North Beatty Street. Bill Number 1748, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 2920 New Beaver Avenue in the 27th Ward. Bill Number 1749, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Big Toms Barber Shop, 2178 Center Avenue. Bill Number 1753, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 32, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement Providing for the Transfer of Fund Not to Exceed $2,803,480 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment, and Accessories for Use by the City of Pittsburgh Departments by Increasing the Capital Equipment Acquisition Line Item by $7,606,000."
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of a vote aye when their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the rule. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No on bill seventeen fifty-three, aye on all other bills.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes on bills one seventeen forty-seven, seventeen forty-eight, and seventeen forty-nine, and six ayes and one no on bill seventeen fifty-three.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that brings us to motions and resolutions. And I have some meeting announcements. First, I'd like to begin by saying this weekend, we will, uh, recognize that it is twenty years since nine eleven, and there's many of us that are working with Josie White and doing some cooking for all of our public safety and, uh, some of our other employees in the city. But I believe that the administration's also working on something and, uh, we'll stay tuned for that. I think that this is, it's unbelievable that it ever happened, but it's even, even more shocking at this point that twenty years has gone by and not much has changed. With that said, we have meeting announcements. This afternoon at one-thirty, uh, council will hold an executive session relative to the legal matters on bills seventeen fifty-five to seventeen fifty-eight. Council will hold their standing committees meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, September eighth at ten AM. Speaker registration closes at nine AM tomorrow morning. To register, please. I don't, there's nothing after the sentence, please. It just says please. Is there supposed to say something in addition? Well, I, I'll get to that part. Okay, please contact the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. On Thursday, September ninth at ten AM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing, uh, on bill thirteen thirty-seven as it relates to the Chatham Institutional Master Plan. Speaker registration closes at eight AM on Thursday morning. To speak at either of these meetings, please register online using the registration form at the bottom of the council meeting webpage. You may also register by calling, again, the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. We are working on the public school and city council districts reapportionment commissions. The reapportionment of city council districts requires nine members to serve, one appointed by each council district representative. The school district reapportionment commission will consist of seven members, three appointed by council, and three appointed by the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, and one appointed by the mayor of Mount Oliver. The commission must be formed by September thirtieth, so please submit your names and nominees no later than the end of business day today, September seventh. We have to have a meeting before the end of September thirtieth. Also, we will, we will still need nominations from members for the CPRB. There are four seats that have been, that have impending term expirations, two of which are now vacant. The seats are as follows. Council seat one, seat is vacant and needs a successor to complete the term ending in ten thirty-one twenty-one. We need three nominees. Council seat number two, law enforcement professional only, term expires ten thirty-one twenty-one, reaport- uh, reappointment request, requested by council to term eleven one twenty-one to ten thirty-one twenty-five. Council seat number four, term expires ten thirty-one twenty-one, reappointment request by council to term eleven one twenty-one to ten thirty-one twenty-five. And the mayoral seat number five, seat, uh, seat vacant due to resignation, needs a successor to complete the term ending by ten thirty-one twenty-one. We need three nominees for that as well. City council is required to provide a total of six nominees. There are three nominee, three council subcommittees have been created containing three members of council in each. Please work together to submit two names per subcommittee. If you have not done so by now, please submit your names to the city clerk as soon as possible so that the names can be introduced by way of resolution. And, you know, they're waiting for us on some of this stuff, so please make sure that you get your nominations in, and the other ones, uh, for us and for school board by the end of today. Do we have anything from members? Seeing none? Can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Move.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.